Evening. My name is Ravine Jimenez and as a member of the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties, we would like to welcome you to this virtual candidate forum. The League is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates. In presenting these forums, it is our goal to provide opportunities for voters to be, to become better informed about the people who are running for public office. The candidate forums have been pre-recorded in conjunction with Northwest Public Broadcasting. The candidate forums will also be available for viewing through additional partners, such as on the Mid-Columbia Badger Club website and on the cities of Richland and Pasco's websites and TV channels for the prospective races, as well as the League's Facebook page and website. The current local races are all nonpartisan positions. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Matt Lovelace, from Merrell College of Communications, WSU Pullman. Please join us in welcoming Matt.
Hello, everybody. I'm Matt Lovelace, your moderator and scholarly assistant professor in the Merrell College at Washington State University. Tonight, as we've been doing each day this week, we'll discuss issues with candidates for a number of races in Benton and Franklin Counties. Today, we'll meet candidates for seats on the Richland School Board and the West Richland City Council. And then, since we have so many candidates to hear from over these next five days, or over these five days, each of these debates is moving along very quickly. Tonight is no different. Five races, five debates, 10 candidates over the next 55 minutes. Now, we have a list of questions submitted by the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties. Responses right now are set at one minute apiece. An equal amount of time will be given to each candidate on a particular question. Our first response, as usual, goes to the person who will appear first on the ballot. I do reserve the right to stop candidates once their time limit is done, and then, of course, fairly adjust response times to fit within this program. Our candidates are aware of these ground rules. Well, the Richland School Board will have at least a couple new faces following the results of the summer's primary. There will be somebody new in position one in the race between Audra Byrd and Danica Garcia. And Ms. Byrd and Ms. Garcia, kind enough to join us to lead off tonight's debates. Thank you both for connecting with us tonight. We do have four questions from the League of Women Voters, meant to give us a bit of a snapshot of your take on issues in the community. Right now, we're set at a minute response for each question, so we'll begin now with some goal setting. What is your biggest goal in running for this position? Ms. Byrd, the time is yours first.
Hi. Thank you so much, Matt. My biggest goals is that I really want to bring in a dual-language program. I also want to bring in some more technical program options, trade school options, including plumbing, construction, daycare, and entrepreneur skills for kids. I also want to bring in some better communication and transparency on the board, including parent surveys given out on a regular basis, and better response time with emails and actually acknowledging parents when they come to school board meetings. So that is what I would like to get done, and I would really like to give more families' voice in school choice options. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Byrd. Ms. Garcia, same question to you. What is your biggest goal when you run for this position?
So I come to this position with a long background in education and a history of working across our district for almost seven years to improve educational opportunities for students. So, starting with classroom to PTO to working shoulder-to-shoulder with our district teachers, administrators, and principals. And I'm running because there's a couple of things that have become evident. We can improve the college and career readiness for all students. We need to better support their social, emotional well-being, and also work to improve in communication for all our students. So, when we're looking at college and career readiness, we need to be closing the achievement gap for all students, whether that's ESL or special ed students. We need to be looking as well at dual-language and ESL programs with social, emotional well-being. We need to be better supporting mental health programs and working with community partners. And finally, with communication, we need to be reaching out into the community and going to our community to make sure that we are listening to them and supporting them with town halls and interactive activities, as well as providing multilingual services. So, I'm here for the students.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. And question number two, and if we're being frank here, school board meetings have been cable news fodder, maybe, when it comes to the pandemic and mandates. So, what do you think the school district's position should be when it comes to federal and state COVID mandates being handed down? Ms. Garcia?
Well, I think that, you know, we all want to make sure that parents are engaged, that our community members are engaged. And local control is very, very important for our districts in the areas where we have jurisdiction under the RCWs of Washington State to do it. That means, though, also, we are sworn in as state, as officials, and we must also follow the laws. So, any mandate is actually a law. So, in Washington, if we choose to violate those mandates, there comes with a serious set of consequences, which includes removal of our state funding for our basic education programs, charges of gross misdemeanors, and our insurance policy as board members is violated, is nullified, excuse me. So, we need to make sure that we are following the law in order to do the best and get to work for actually solving the issues for our students. We need to absolutely support freedom of speech and First Amendment rights, but we need to make sure as leaders that we are leading in a way that helps our students and provides a voice that brings our community together and supports our students so they can grow and they can learn, and it's time.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Garcia. Ms. Byrd, same question to you. As those federal and state mandates do come down and how they affect school districts, how should a district or a board react?
Children have a greater chance of dying in a car accident or from even being struck by lightning there compared to the harmful effects of COVID in children. I am a strong advocate for having choice in our schools and not having a forced mandate at a time when our state has a mandate, which is not a law. A law has to be passed through legislation. When we have a state mandate, there are ways to work within this mandate to allow more freedom and less restrictions for our students. And I strongly advocate for working within that gray area where our school board has historically been as strict as possible. I advocate for giving a lot more freedom to choose and be able to have less restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, moving on to number three, many districts are considering a major addition to school curriculum, others deciding against it, big decisions for school boards across the country. So, my question is, what is your definition of critical race theory? What is that to you? And as a board member, would you be for or against including that in curriculum? Ms. Byrd, you're first.
Thank you. Critical race theory, or I like to group it in with other ideologies similar to critical race theory, anything that is teaching that we have systemic racism or that there is a group of people that are oppressors and another group of people that are being oppressed, anything along those lines, I don't think should be taught to our children. These ideologies and critical race theory has shown to be very divisive and segregating in schools. As a mother of children and foster children who are of all different colors, I have two sons, one son that has beautiful brown skin and one son that has beautiful peach skin, and I absolutely will not tolerate any racism or bigotry to my son with brown skin, and I absolutely will not tolerate any racism or bigotry to my son with white skin. Critical race theory has caused a lot of problems and is racist, in my opinion, and I advocate for unifying our students, not dividing them. Thank you.
And Ms. Garcia, same question. What is critical race theory to you, and would you be for or against it?
I want to address a previous comment briefly, that actually, under Washington State, it has been clearly said that violating a mandate is equivalent to violating a law, and it would be nullifying our oath of office as elected officials. So, we need to be clear on that fact and the effects that it would have. When it comes to critical race theory, the issue is that critical race theory, we all want our students, of course, to be cared for, to be included. And I think that's really the point where we need to be talking about here. There is no curriculum of critical race theory. There is no state standard for critical race theory, and critical race theory is not taught in schools. This has been brought forth again and again and again across the United States in the media. It's time to stop trying to divide people over this issue. What we do need to be doing is working together, to finding ways to be inclusive and to support our students and to support our teachers to better understand who is in their classroom and how to support those students. And it is time to make sure that we really do have liberty and justice for all and making sure that we include our students and support their rights.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And the final question, really getting at the purpose of education, student success, but really a question of how we get there, according to you. So, what policies should or could the board be enacting to ensure student learning, improvement, and success, but for all students in your district? Ms. Garcia, you're up first.
I think there's a couple of areas that we need to be looking at more carefully. When we look at our demographics across our student groups for Richland School District, we notice a couple of things. One, that not all students come in equally ready for kindergarten, so we need to be including our efforts there to making sure that all our students have equal readiness and are equally prepared so that we can start closing that achievement gap that starts before students arrive in pre-K. The other area we need to be doing is there's, our ESL students in Richland School District are quite, are not meeting the standards at a significant rate compared to their native speaking counterparts. So, we need to be doing more, which includes developing our dual-language program, which is a program that I have advocated for since 2017 in this district. The other thing we do doing is late arrival programs. We need to be supporting our special education students and making sure that they're included, as well as our high-cap students. We need to also be balancing with career readiness, so every student sees that they have a future here in our district.
Thanks, Ms. Garcia. Ms. Byrd, same question to you. Policies that the board can enact for student success?
The meter for student success should always be lifelong learning and career readiness. I think it's important, first, to address our grade level standards and getting our students up to par in that, and then also focusing on school choice options like Three Rivers Home Link, the dual-language program, and our trade school options, so that we can better focus our kids on what their individual strengths are and better meet their needs. And as we entertain and focus on these things for our kids, that's how they can get that lifelong learning and that true success. Thank you.
Ms. Byrd, thank you very much. Ms. Garcia, as well. That does it for our look at the Richland School Board Director One position. Thank you both for your time tonight. Now, as I mentioned, some expected turnover on the board. Three of the five positions up for election, but one does have an incumbent there. Board President Rick Jansons is running for reelection in the position two seat, facing a challenge from Ben Griggs. Now, we're glad to have both Mr. Jansons and Mr. Griggs with us virtually here tonight. We have been over the ground rules. In short, one-minute responses for each of these four questions provided by the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties. And Mr. Jansons, you're first on the ballot, so you get first answer here. What is your biggest goal in running for this position, and in your case, again?
Well, my biggest goal is to make sure that we come through this crisis and reopen and continue to stay open safely for our students. I'm running because this is the most difficult time for schools in the history of our state, and I have the experience and the knowledge to help us, to help guide us through the rest of this COVID and get us back to a new normal. I've enjoyed serving the last 20 years. I have 35 years budgeting experience, the father of five, one of whom is still in Richland Schools, and five grandkids who you might hear running around in the background here in my house this evening, have a vested interest certainly in the future of our schools.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jansons. You know, it makes good TV when the kids show up in the background of the shot, so we won't hate it too much. And Mr. Griggs, same question to you. As you challenge for this position, what's your biggest goal in running for the school board and why?
Yeah, great question. So, my biggest goal is to bring much-needed change to the school board. Rick has been on for a long time, and we need to ask ourselves if our schools are better than they were five, 10, and even 20 years ago. As I've watched how things have gone over the last 18 months, I've noticed that there is a need for new leadership, new ideas, a new direction for the district, and that's what I really want to bring to the district, bring these fresh ideas to help our students achieve what they can achieve, help them be the best that they can be, and prepare them to be better citizens of our country and to help them really succeed in life. So, that's my main goal, is to bring these fresh ideas and fresh leadership to a school district and a board that has become stagnant, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you very much. And we did ask this question of our candidates in the position one race. We're curious to get your responses as well. And certainly a topic, Mr. Jansons, you mentioned it, hoping to get into sort of a post-pandemic world. We're just not quite there yet. And of course, state and federal mandates coming down. So, the question, Mr. Griggs first, what should the school district's position be regarding federal and state COVID mandates as they come down?
So, yeah, so we are, you know, we need to follow the mandates as they've been given to us. That means, you know, masking for now, and we need to make sure that we're keeping our schools open as safely as possible. There's not much we can do about the mandates. They're coming from higher authorities, and in order to maintain our funding and stay open, you know, on that end, we need to follow that guidance. So, my position is we need to follow that guidance, but I also feel that we need to do everything we can to regain local control. We've lost a lot of local control over the last year and have just seemed to have given it up without any fight. So, I would really like to push to regain that control as far as masking in the schools goes, as far as vaccination mandates and things like that. I think those should be choices that we personally make at a, you know, personal level and at a local level, not mandated from the federal or state government.
And Mr. Jansons, same question to you. What should the school respond, specifically your school district's response be or position be regarding those mandates as they come down from up high?
Well, of course, we follow the law and we follow the mandates, and we've been doing that. These past 18 months have been the hardest 18 months in my 20 years of service because it's been so difficult and because we have lost a lot of that local control. I'm on a, because I'm president of the Washington State School Directors Association, I'm on a governor's call every two weeks and have pushed extremely hard for local control by school districts because not every school district's like Seattle. And we have very small school districts. Our school district worked closely with our local Department of Health to open. We were among the first 10% of the districts in the state to open safely last year. And I think that's a good goal because students belong in schools and they deserve a safe environment. The other thing that we did, that I'm going to continue to do, is work with industrial hygiene professionals to make sure that we are implementing the rules correctly to ensure a safe learning environment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jansons. And the third question in from the League asks for your thoughts on a topic that, of course, has sparked plenty of debate. And Mr. Jansons, you're first here this time. So, in your words, what is critical race theory? Certainly a topic I'm sure you've thought about. Now, as a board member, would you be for or against including it in the curriculum?
So, critical race theory is typically taught in law school, and the board has already taken a vote and taken a stance that we don't and won't teach critical race theory in our schools. That's a done deal already. It's really not an issue in this campaign unless, you know, Mr. Griggs wants to teach critical race theory, which I don't believe is his position. But that's something that's already been decided by our board. What is important that the state did and that we implemented locally, they required us to teach cultural awareness and diversity to our staff, not the students, and that's to make sure our staff understands the different needs of kids based on their background and their family's background and sometimes their national heritage. The goal of that is to make sure that our teachers can connect with kids, develop those relationships, and ensure a better educational outcome. But it has nothing to do with critical race theory, and our board doesn't support that.
Mr. Jansons, thank you very much. And Mr. Griggs, we will ask you the question, sort of in your words, what is critical race theory, and join us on the hypothetical. You join the board, things change. Would you be for or against it in the curriculum?
Yeah. So, like Rick said, critical race theory is not currently being taught in the Richland School District. I'm grateful for that. However, I am concerned that it's creeping in. We don't teach, or critical race theory is a college level, of course, typically taught in law schools, but so, I mean, multivariable calculus is taught in colleges, too, but we lay the groundwork for those classes early on. And I'm concerned that those early footholds of critical race theory are beginning to creep into our district, and we need to be more vigilant in making sure that any divisive ideology that divides people along racial, cultural, religious, political lines is not included in our teaching. I am for teaching, you know, diversity, and that diversity is good, that we have a lot of different types of people, types of students in our district, and that we need to be inclusive of them. We need to teach everyone that we're Americans and that we should respect and love one another, and not that we should be divided along any type of lines politically or racially or anything like that.
Thank you very much. And our final question has to do with student success. It's certainly a buzzword in academic circles, but what does that look like in terms of policy, is where we're getting at here. So, what policies should or could the board enact to ensure that student learning improvement and success goes for all students in the district? Mr. Griggs, first this time.
Yeah. So, student success is an interesting thing. We have a school system that has taken a very cookie-cutter approach to education for many, many years, and that doesn't always work for our students. As far as policy goes, the board needs to set policy that allows for a wide range of educational opportunities for our students. We need to teach our kids about all kinds of things and allow them to explore the interests and things that fit them and their learning styles and their interests best. For some students, that means, you know, on a college or university track, and that type of education. For others, it may be going into the trades or into the workforce. And even for others, serving our country proudly as a military member. And so, there's lots of ways that we, as a board, need to encourage academic success in a variety of ways, and that's encouraging multiple avenues for success for our students through various different types of educational opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Mr. Jansons, same question. What does student success mean from a policy standpoint as a board member?
Well, I think from a policy standpoint, we need to provide options for students, and I'm proud that our district doesn't have a cookie-cutter approach to offerings for our students. I'm proud of the work that I've done to bring Delta High School as an option, to bring Three Rivers Home Link as an option, to bring the Richland Health Science Academy as an option, because I think when we capture a student's passion, it leads to more investment on the part of that student and better success. I'm looking forward to continuing to work and bringing more options to students, including things like dual-language and Montessori. So, I think it's that ability to reach the students and hit their passion and provide just these options for students and their families that helps bring that student success, because that's really the key role of a school, is how do we help our students? How do we help them succeed? And that's what I've been about for 20 years, and looking forward, with your votes, to continue to do that.
Thank you very much. And that is our very quick look at the position two race on the Richland School Board of Directors. Mr. Rick Jansons, Mr. Ben Griggs, thank you so much to you both. What a great conversation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And we move on into our third Richland School Board race, one that will feature a new face in the position three seat. Voters choosing between Semi Byrd and Liz Van Clark. The winner is going to replace Ken Gosney, who was appointed to the board just last fall. Now, we are connecting with Mr. Byrd and Ms. Van Clark. Thank you both for being here. We have four questions, and each question does come with a one-minute time limit for a response. The first will be pretty simple, ask you to assess your goals. We hope you're prepared for that one. What is your biggest goal in running for this position? And Ms. Clark, you get the first minute here. Ms. Van Clark, excuse me.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the time. My first overall goal here is I'd like to see us bring our community back together, and there's several parts to that. We've had a serious issue with communication from our school board, our school district, to our parents and our teachers, our educational staff. Want to see that improve. We need more parent involvement, more community involvement in decision-making, and we need some transparency about how those decisions are made. And that's all part and parcel with bringing our community back together. I think that we can get creative and innovative in our outreach. I think that in order to put our students first, we need to work together as a team, and communication, that transparency is going to be a big part of putting our students first, of communicating with each other, and of bringing us back together as a community so that our kids can be successful. We're all teammates in this.
Thank you very much. And moving on, Mr. Byrd, what is your biggest goal when it comes to running for this position?
I would say my biggest goal is to re-establish confidence in our school district, to bridge gaps that may exist, to partner with our parents and families with a student-centric mission of actually looking to bring a higher quality of education to the students. And what I mean by that is, when we look at our academic report card, we're not doing as good as we should be doing. We're looking at a D-, an F-, and an F-. When you look at English and language arts, math and science, I know we can actually do better. And so, one of my initial goals is going to be to do a deep dive assessment of where we are within the school district across all of our programs, to establish where we're at, to look at how we're performing, identify any gaps, and then take that information and start to put together a strategic plan, an operating plan of how we are going to run the district so that we are moving forward. And without a plan, we're just going to be more reactive versus proactive.
Well, thank you very much. And we will touch on student success a little bit later in the debate. I'll just sort of have you put that one in your pockets. But every district right now is dealing with COVID-19 in some kind of way. Now, the handling of that, certainly not universal district to district. So, on the topic of COVID-19 policy, what should the district's position be when it comes to federal and state COVID mandates as they come down? And Mr. Byrd, you're up first for this one.
You know, we had this discussion not too long ago, and depending on how you spin the words, a mandate is not a law, but it is enforceable as if it is. And so, what I would say to that is this, as a school board, as a school district, we have to abide by mandates. But what I would say in terms of resistance, I have a problem of terminating school district staff because they have not met the mandate for getting their vaccination. I support choice, greatly support choice. And so, if I was to summarize, number one, we're not going to break any laws. We're not going to violate or say we're not going to do it and expose anybody to dangers. But if we can find a way to satisfy both sides of the argument, I think choice is the way to go. If we can find a way to not terminate our employees, our teachers, our staff, we should look for resolutions to do that. So, again, not violating law, but looking for resolutions, looking for options, having discussions of how we can still meet the mandates and the requirements without terminating our staff.
And Ms. Van Clark, same question to you. How should a school district handle things as these federal and state mandates come down?
Well, I think our larger goal, our first goal, is to keep our kids in class as much as possible. And that is why those mandates are coming down, is because we're trying to keep COVID rates down so that we can keep our students in class. The majority of our kids learn better when they're in class, and we know that. I like that our district has offered quite a variety of options, however, to meet the needs of our students and family. When it comes to the vaccination mandates, those are mandates of other vaccinations that we've had around for a long time. This is just a new one. I think it's appropriate that we have mandates that have exemptions for personal religious beliefs and medical exemptions. And from what I understand, our school district, Richland School District, is respecting those personal religious exemptions. So, I think we're actually not going to lose as many teachers as we might be concerned about losing. I think we're in a good place to make sure our kids and our staff are safe.
All right. Thank you very much. Certainly the prevailing topic right now. But, you know, another one, and we talked to our last couple sets of candidates about this, is school boards across the country are also maybe assessing the value of critical race theory as part of schoolwork. Now, Ms. Van Clark, how would you define critical race theory in terms of curriculum? And as a board member, would you be for or against including it in Richland?
Critical race theory is a 40-plus-year-old legal theory. It's dabbled into the higher levels of educational pedagogy, but that's more in the case on levels of masters and PhDs. We don't teach it in schools. In Washington State, what we teach is set by state standards, and the state standards do not include critical race theory. And it's a good thing they don't because critical race theory isn't age-appropriate. We're teaching K-12 education, so it doesn't belong in our classrooms, doesn't belong in our schools, and it isn't in Washington State standards. Now, what we have been doing that I've been hearing our community concerned about, and this has been for several decades, is our cultural competency and our cultural responsive teaching practices and trainings. That's been going on for some time. The purpose of those trainings is so that we can create classrooms that are welcoming to all of our students, no matter what culture they come from or their background.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Byrd, same question to you, defining critical race theory, and in terms of how it may or may not be included in curriculum in Richland.
No, thank you. So, as the only black candidate born before civil rights, running for any of the elections in our region, I would say this. I'm uniquely qualified in a sense to understand the dangers of critical race theory. And if you want to know the definition of critical race theory, you have to look at the five tenants. I've read the textbook. I've been a subject matter expert in diversity inclusion for years. I've been invited to speak as keynotes for the local summits and regional summits. So, this is something I'm very familiar with. When you start to look at the theory and you start to say that our system is innately racist, I have a problem with that. And when you look at State Bill 5044, at the very top, it says, "In order to dismantle systematic racism within our school system." There's a tell right there. And when you start looking at terms like historical context, that is another element, tenant of critical race theory. So, I would argue- So I would argue, although people will try to tell us that this is college level, it'll never be taught, it's already in certain elements of our curriculum and our policy.
Mr. Bird, thank you very much. And question number four, I sort of hinted at this earlier, will be about specifically about the board's role when it comes to student success. And we have one minute again here. And Mr. Bird, time yours here. What policies should the board enact to ensure student learning improvement and success when it comes to every student in the district?
No, and again, I appreciate that. I alluded to it earlier. We are performing, we have services, we have programs that are all related to our student's success. We do not have a strategic plan within our Richland School District. So I would ask, what is quantitative data that supports where we at in terms of performance in these programs? Right now, all we have is a report card that is telling us that we're failing. So when we're talking about policies for student success, I would look at things like the Universal Design for Learning Framework, which I am a strong advocate for, taking the Addy approach, analyze, design, develop, and implement. What I'm saying is all students learn differently. And I believe in establishing policies that addresses students where they are individually, whether they're performing at the top or they're performing at the bottom. We need to approach students individually, understand where they're at, and be flexible in how we assess. That's why I'm a big fan of the Universal Design for Learning.
Mr. Bird, thank you very much. And Ms. Van Clark, for you, what does student success from a policy standpoint as a board member?
You know, when we look at the data, we have to keep that data in mind with context of the data that's showing across Washington State. And we do have a problem statewide in all of our school districts and our students meeting state standards. And from a policy perspective, unfortunately, there's a certain amount of that that we can't address because it is set by state policy. But I have found over the years that we have lost a great deal of educational hours to excessive state testing and mandated testing. That testing is taking away up to over a month worth of teaching, which means that our students aren't learning as much annually as they used to be. The curriculum is very focused on the curriculum that we've been adopting over the years, have been very focused on just those tests and not on the context and the skills that our students need. So I feel that we need to bring in our, our community. We need to bring in some advisory advisors to take a look at that curriculum and make sure that we are actually teaching our students the skills and the context that they need so that they can be successful.
Well, Ms. Van Clark, Mr. Bird, thank you so much for being here tonight. We do wish you both good campaigns for these final couple of weeks. Candidates for Richland School Board, position three.
Thank you.
Well, our next race or our next pair of races takes a look at a couple of seats for the city council representing the 15,000 residents of West Richland. And our first race here, challenger Stephen Davis is up against incumbent John Smart. And we're all here as we go through a series of questions that come in from the League of Women Voters. Now, each of those questions has set aside one minute for a response. And Mr. Davis, you appear first on the ballot, so we'll start with you here and then we'll alternate with the order thereafter. Question one, pretty simple. Hope you're ready for this one. What's your biggest goal in running for this position and why?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to start off with. My biggest goal that I'm trying to achieve is I want to make sure we're bringing in the proper economic development to support the tremendous growth we're having in our community. It's important that we don't rely on a single funding source or property tax revenue to, to make the necessary changes as our community grows. So I want to make sure we're economically developing through commercial businesses. Yeah, I'm sorry. The necessary capital to make sure our infrastructure stays sound.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. And Mr. Smart, we'll turn that question to you. In terms of goal setting, certainly for you, it's a matter of what you want to build on in running for this position.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity and the platform here. I want to continue to build. I've been on council for about six years, and I think we are on a good track of keeping West Richland on a sustainable pace of development. We are trying hard to maintain our rural and residential environment, but at the same time, we're very inviting to businesses and commercial development. I think we've got a city layout and a plan. We've got willing builders. We've got neighborhoods that are welcoming the growth. And our job as a city council is to maintain a strong infrastructure, well-planned infrastructure, and grow that while staying within, which is a real challenge with only 15,000 people. But we've gotten a couple of new facilities online. We're in a good financial position, and my goal is to keep us on track and steered on course.
All right. Thank you very much. And question two gets right at the heart of COVID policy. Mr. Smart, as we alternate, you go first here. What do you think the city's position should be in regards to federal and state COVID mandates as they come down?
So I think the cities certainly followed all of the recommended guidelines to date. They haven't honestly been as hard to implement as I think we might have first thought they would be. We've got staff who have managed to stay productive and employed throughout the entire COVID season, I guess you will. We've had some impact with our virtual meetings. They started out a little awkward, you know, as the rest of the community is seeing. We are getting on pretty well with our virtual meetings. I do miss having the flick at our council meetings, seeing people face to face. There's been a little bit of limitation on sort of offline discussions. Sometimes what you'd see happen before and after meetings. But otherwise, I think we're doing pretty well, and I think the city is an admirable job of, you know, maintaining, following the regulations and not shutting ourselves down.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Smart. Mr. Davis, same question to you. What should a city's position be when federal and state mandates come down?
No, I appreciate it. And I think Mr. Smart is correct. I do believe West Richland's done a great job of enforcing and putting in place the proper safety measures and following the mandates, both state and federally. As an employee of Ben Franklin Transit, you know, we have our own federal mandates that are in place as public transportation. And I think it's very valuable that we do what we can to keep both ourselves and our community members safe, you know, as, as a parent, as a peer, as an employer. You know, I've always said I'll do what I can to ensure the safety of the people around me, you know, whether they're loved ones, whether they're people I work with, my community. And I think ensuring that we're following these practices, whether it's 100% effective, 5% effective, 50% effective, it's important that we're doing what we can to ensure everyone in our community is safe.
Thank you very much. And onto question number three, and we're assessing your community's needs, of course, beyond the pandemic. Hopefully, that's the biggest part of the job moving forward. So excluding COVID, what do you think's the most controversial issue you could face in the city if you are elected? Mr. Davis, first.
Sure. I think the most controversial thing happening with Richland is kind of this, this, the idea of changing our community. There's a, there's a group of individuals like myself who think we need to find some more, you know, commercial opportunities to bring some tax revenue to the community. And there's, there's others who, you know, enjoy the small hometown, large plot, kind of rural, established community. And I don't think either is right or wrong, but as divided as I feel like the community is in this topic, that I think regardless of the position of how the city moves, there's always going to be a great opposition from a significant number of the people within our community.
Mr. Davis, thank you. Mr. Smart, same question. What do you, what do you think aside from COVID will be the most controversial issue you'll have to deal with in this next term?
I think that we're going to have to deal with, and they are related with growth. What Mr. Davis said is partially true. I've learned over the course of six years that I, and I might seem a little presumptuous here, but I think we can have both. I think we can have excellent commercial development. We can even have a big box store or two or however many we need. We can have small businesses move in. We can have a full-fledged economy and still provide opportunities for large lots, mini farms. We have a large segment of two and a half acre parcels, which I think we've fought to maintain. But I think they'll be the jewel of the desert, and there will be more like them, I'm hopeful. But there'll also be, you know, apartment complexes and high density, medium density housing. So, but road, road repairs, big thing coming up. That's something that the city has to tackle and really come up with a budget for that. And then just infrastructure, water, sewer, possibly a new sewer plant. All of these things will be challenges in the near future.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smart, it's almost like you looked at my notes here because next question was about infrastructure. Of course, that's been a big national topic of late, so let's apply that idea locally. And maybe that'll allow you to elaborate here. Where might the city get new sources of infrastructure money? And what projects, and I know you sort of answered this, but do you think could be prioritized? Mr. Smart, I'll let you continue here.
Yeah, so we can't grow based on just property taxes alone and residential property taxes. We would all go broke. We need the businesses to come in. We need to spend our money here in West Richland instead of taking it to the surrounding cities as much as I like to support our fellow Tricidians. We really need to do some business here in West Richland. We have plenty of wealth here and capability. It's just that it all gets exported every single day to the other cities around us. So as we move past the, you know, we're at 15,000, we get past the 20, 25,000 mark, I'm confident that there will be businesses coming in and establishing roots. That, that'll give us the resources we need, and we're kind of betting on that. So, but yes, we will need substantially new sources. We have plans for water sources. We have air tie with Richland, and we have plans developing for future sewer systems. Electrical, the banking area has been awesome to work with.
Mr. Smart, thank you very much. And Mr. Davis, same question to you. Where do you think the city could get sources of infrastructure money for some projects?
Yeah, so a couple of places. One, Mr. Smart has already shared, you know, bringing in that commercial development, that commercial tax base. Additionally, we need to work with, you know, our, our state and federal funding sources. Obviously, WashDOT is coming in where there's the expansion project of the Highway 225. We need to continue looking at our revenues and our grant options to make the accessibility of our community easier for the surrounding areas to come and spend their money here, like Mr. Smart had said.
Well, thank you both for your time today. Thanks for logging on with us. Normally, we'd have you sitting next to us, but this makes it nice and convenient for our voters. Candidates for the position one seat on the West Richland City Council, first of two races on that council we're talking about tonight. Best of luck for the rest of your campaigns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, John.
And finally, tonight, the second of those two races. Teresa Morell and Ken Stoker, both running for the position two seat on the West Richland City Council. And the two of them are here with us tonight as we get to learn a little bit more about our candidates for position two. And thank you for joining us here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it's kind of a lightning round debate. I have warned them for questions each, one minute for a response and no time to waste. So question one, Ms. Morell, we'll get to you first. What is your biggest goal in running for this position on the city council?
I would like to see a healthy balance between business and our population. I'd like to research ways such as grants, possible regulation changes to assist with this and to try and obtain affordable housing to not only create more opportunities and housings for all our city citizens, but also to create more revenue for our city to help with the city tax burden on our residents. We've been making great progress so far, and I would like to keep that going. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mr. Stoker, that same question goes to you, pretty broad question. What is your biggest goal in running for this position?
Well, my biggest goal would probably be the recognition of property rights for all citizens in our community. I think there are many scenarios within our city code that prohibits people from being able to do things the way they wish to. One of the recent ones was a big uproar that the citizens brought forward regarding animal raising on their properties, and chickens was one of them. Basically, they have made it difficult for people with smaller properties to be able to have chickens of their own, as an example. Other things are, there are still some properties where there are residential buildings, homes that are zoned as commercial, and people can't use them or sell them as residential properties as they are. So there are a lot of things I think that we can do to improve our property rights in our community.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And question two, which we have asked of the position one and two candidates just moments ago, and it's in regards to sort of the biggest topic right now, COVID-19. What do you think the city's position should be regarding federal and state COVID mandates as they come down to your community? Mr. Stoker, you're first to start here.
Yeah, so I think there is a fine line to tread here. I think it's important that we recognize that everyone should be able to live their lives accordingly. Granted, we don't want to endanger populations if you're sick. Obviously, I agree that people should stay home when they do contract it personally. I am actually sick right now. I went and got a test done yesterday, and I'm still waiting for the results. But I have been in my home all day and haven't gone anywhere. So I would expect that we can trust our citizens to do what is right and that they can adhere to the recommendations. I am not a fan of the mandates, but that comes from higher up, and so there's probably little that we can do about it when that occurs. Thank you.
And once again, illustrating the benefits of being on Zoom. We'd love to meet in person, but at least you could be here for the debate, so we do appreciate that. I will ask Ms. Morell the same question. What do you think the city's position should be when it comes to federal and state COVID mandates?
Well, I'm in total agreement with Mr. Stoker. I believe it is a personal, individual choice as well. And I do think we should try and follow the mandates. Like you said, if you're sick, stay home. If you need to get the shot, get the shot. If you don't, discuss it with your doctor, your friends, your family to make the correct decision for you. But yeah, most importantly, if you're sick, stay home so we don't affect other people.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morell. And we certainly hope the West Richland City Council and others will be governing in a post-pandemic world at some point. So let's exclude COVID from the topics here. What do you think the most controversial issue is facing the city council? And how would you deal with it if elected? Ms. Morell?
I have a couple of items, actually. There's a lot of issues, actually. I think one of the issues that I think should be addressed is, I think it's a negative, negative portrayal of city councils on social media formats when members don't see eye to eye. I think that's something that should be worked out between the council and not put out negative information on the social media outlets. My understanding, the current council is discussing possibly going to a city manager slash administrator form of government, which I oppose at this time. Mayors are elected by the community. They have term limits. A city manager is hired to stay quite a while and cost the city more money. I don't think our city's there yet where we need to go that route. I think we should keep it the way it's going. We're making progress. And I also think our city needs to join other cities with partnerships to help address mental illness, drug addiction, and our homelessness. Our city currently can't support that by ourselves, so it's important to look to other cities, to join forces.
And sorry, Ms. Morell, sorry, we've gone way past your minute here. I'm going to have to move on to Mr. Stoker. What do you think, Mr. Stoker, is the most controversial issue facing the city council?
Okay, so for, for one, the first one, I do agree with Ms. Morell on the city manager situation. I do not like that one. I think once the, a city manager environment becomes a reality, that some of the city council loses touch with, say, city staff, and so they don't always get readily available access to find out the answers to their questions. They always have to potentially go through the city manager. In West Richland, that has been a fairly open avenue, as long as, you know, we don't try to circumvent around the mayor. Secondly, I think, so recently, the city council did add in some more time for citizens to provide public comment. I am on board with that. I've always been on board with that in the past. board with that. In the past, we tried to get first and second readings so that, you know, citizens who come in on a meeting and find out there's a new item on the agenda, they could potentially have another meeting to wait in order to research it, and that be able to provide input. I think transparency and being able to communicate with our citizens is very important.
All right. Thank you very much. And last question, question number four, as we talked about growth in the area, really every city in the area, but West Richland, another place that's seen growth for decades, still seeing 30%, 40% population increases as we take these censuses. So question four is, how would you propose to manage the growth that West Richland is experiencing? And Mr. Stoker, the time is yours.
Yes, so I'm all for the growth. I'm excited to see things like the Heights of Red Mountain, that bringing in more residences, bringing in opportunities for people to come and enjoy the environment we have here. Granted, as Ms. Morel has highlighted before, I do like to see businesses come here and help to bolster this environment. But we do have to recognize that there are some limitations that we have in West Richland. We do not have a high-capacity, high-volume, high-speed transportation arterial near us. We've been compared in the past to places like Connel or Benton City, who are smaller than we are. But guess what? Connel has 395 going right by it. People going back and forth from Spokane to the Tri-Cities and maybe to Oregon, they can stop in Connel and get gas and get food. We don't have that kind of access in West Richland. I think that we just, in many respects, need to be patient, allow our citizenship to grow. Some of these larger, you know, businesses like McDonald's or something like that, they have their business plan, and when we have fulfilled those requirements, they will come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know this is kind of an open-ended question. Ms. Morel, we'll turn it to you now. How would you propose to manage growth that West Richland is experiencing?
I agree with Mr. Stoker. We need to have that Red Mountain interchange off of the I-82 freeway that would open the west end of West Richland. And again, like you said, we need business. We have nothing, you get, you go with your friends, go out for a night, and you go, let's run to West Richland for what? We have, we'd have nothing to draw on, except we do have a lot of community events. That I'm thankful for because that at least does draw people to our city. But we need things to keep our people in our city. We need to have them work in our city. So we need to access money. We need to have money to do things with, and we don't have that if we don't have businesses helping us with that. Right now, the homeowners are taking the brunt. Again, working with other jurisdictions, just like Richland School District, I mean, look at what we've done here with Richland School District. We've joined forces with Richland, and we have middle schools and elementary schools. And it's possible we could do that with other cities as well. So I don't want to run into my frame.
Well, Ms. Morel, thank you so much. Both of you, thank you for the responses. But that does it for our look at the first two races now at our coverage of the West Richland City Council. Teresa Morel, Ken Stoker, candidates for the position two seat. Thank you so much for connecting with us tonight.
Thank you. Get well, Ken.
Thank you very much, Teresa.
Well, thanks again to all of our candidates who made this work tonight technologically and within their schedules. A rare chance to gain insight on five different local races in less than an hour. And voters get a chance to make their voices heard on November 2nd, that's Election Day. Also, the deadline for in-person registration. Mailed ballots are being sent out from both Benton and Franklin Counties this week. Now, coming up in the series, tomorrow night, we'll finish our look at West Richland with the races for the position three seat, as well as the mayoral race, before we turn our attention to a pair of Pasco races. If you happen to miss today's debate or Monday's featuring races in Kenwick, be sure to find them at nwpb.org. For everybody here at Northwest Public Broadcasting, thank you for joining us to learn a little more about your candidates. Have a great night.